Councilman Vins?
Yes.
Councilman Cook?
Here.
Councilman Tenon?
We do have a quorum, Pledge of Allegiance?
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Tonight's bill's total six hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty-seven cents.
So moved.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cook?
Yep.
Councilman Vins?
Yes.
Councilman Tenon?
Yes.
Councilman Dennis?
Yes.
Councilman Weiner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton?
Yes.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilman Collier?
Yes.
Motion passes. Do we have any correspondence tonight?
No.
Remarks of visitors?
Mike Graham? It's not your turn, Stephanie.
Thanks for having me. Good seeing y'all. As a Main Street business, like also live in my business, so I get a lot more inundated with everything on Main Street probably than the average business owner. Some of the things we would, we've talked and talked about on Main Street is proper crosswalks. The ones we have now, you can't even see the lines and they're not proper crosswalks because there's not a sign that designated that as crosswalk. I mean, I personally about got smushed the other day leaving the Brady Bakery. There's a truck down by Petite Paree and I said, well, I got plenty of time. By the time I stepped in the street, I almost got ran over. He's probably doing forty mile an hour. Speeders is one of the big things. A lot of people on, you know, I've talked to a lot of the business owners that speeders are a big issue. Was the narrow the streets are, you know, zipping down the streets, you know, I know in the past we've talked about speed bumps. One thing, talking to some of the business owners again, at Bobbering Street, you know, right now it's currently a one-way street. There's been talk about making it two ways. So there's more than two ways to get on Main Street just from east or west. Be perfect place for a three-way stop. The curbs would support it. No, you know, nothing but poking signs in the ground and painting some stripes. Have a cut down on the racetrack on that side of Main Street, you know, having a stop there. Make them stop. It'd be a perfect place for a proper crosswalk also. Two-hour parking on the zero block or the first east block of Main Street. There's probably four or five two-hour parking signs. The one hundred and two hundred blocks, there's a total, I believe of two totals on that side of the block. I know parking is something we've, I've talked to. And, you know, he said they can't really enforce it because someone got sued for chopping somebody's tire, you know, whatever. What I've found is most of the people that are parking on the street all day are most of the service businesses. The people that rely on foot traffic, you know, they're very conscientious about parking in the back and away from the front on Main Street. The people that don't rely on the foot traffic, you know, there'll be five, six cars just in the area across from my business that are there all day long. They close at five, they get in their cars and they go home. The apartment buildings, you know, they're usually not a problem. They're usually gone going to work in the morning at nine, 10 o'clock. But even behind them, they got designated parking for tenants only that nobody uses. So, you know, it is what it is. It's just, you know, uh, Main Street needs some kind of personal victories. You know, I know we're getting ready to do some work on the big parking lot, which, you know, that's great. It needs, you know, upgrade it, whatever needs to be done to it. It's just, you know, you ask people on Main Street, it's like, they don't care, you know, it doesn't affect them on the street. You know, it'd be nice just to see some little things starting to happen on Main Street, you know, be it crosswalks, you know, whatever it might be, because it's just, you know, the first thing everybody says is sidewalk, sidewalks. Well, I know you guys have heard that, they all blew in the face. But it's just, you know, seeing some little improvements at a time on the physical Main Street, I think would be a great plus. Get some of the business owners back behind everything because, you know, they don't see anything, you know, it's the same thing year in, year out. Just on a side note, I've been doing a lot of walking in Sunshine Park. The little path that goes down there, I mean, you physically gotta lift vines out of the way to get down the path. It's just a little overgrown. It's been that way for probably a month and a half now. And I just think it's a pretty little park and could just use a little help, you know, the, under the swings and stuff, all the mulch, whatever it is, it's all grass growing through it. It's just, you know.
Sunset, one right back here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sun, oh, I'm sorry, Sunshine. Sunshine Park.
Sunshine.
One behind, right, right back here. Yeah. It's just kind of overgrown and, you know, weeds out of sidewalk and cracks in the bridge and everything else. But it's pretty park. And also where that little path crossed over the other one, it'd be nice to see just a couple of stripes there just to remind drivers that, hey, that's a walking path going across the street. That's all I got. Any questions, Randy?
All right, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question. We really can't chalk tires no more? That was the legal case, Brian. Mr. Malone?
I'm not, I'm not sure. What was your question?
The, he said that the, we can't chalk tires anymore because someone got sued?
Uh, I don't know if that's necessarily the case for Missouri law. I'm gonna have to research a little further on that.
I mean, just, if I understand one more thing, I was just thinking, you know, if you guys could just make little courtesy notes to stick up people when you know they've been there for two hours. As a reminder for city ordinance, yada, 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 there's two-hour parking on Main Street. To jog their memory.
Once again, thank you very much, Mr. Graham. Bid. RFP for auditing services.
Sorry about that. That was tiny print. Anyway, good evening, everybody. So I'm presenting the RFP for our auditing, auditing services. It ended, our three-year contract ended with our fiscal year of nine thirty of 2022. We did receive only one bid because two out of the three firms said that they would not bid for auditing services. I don't know if you're aware, but there is kind of an auditing shortage going on right now. We have been happy with everything that Stop &amp; Van Hoy has done for us in the last few years, and so they were the ones that did bid. And you can see all of the numbers for the, the next five fiscal years. So it'd be fiscal year twenty-three through fiscal year twenty-seven if we, if you accept this proposal. Does anybody have any specific questions? If, if nobody has any questions, there you, the requested action is on there, Mr. Mayor, to, to accept the proposal from Stop &amp; Van Hoy LLC and allow the city administrator to enter into an agreement with them for the auditing services for fiscal years ending FY twenty-three through twenty-seven.
Alrighty. I'll entertain a motion to approve the auditing services from RFP for those years. Twenty-three through?
FY twenty-three through twenty-seven.
Through twenty-seven. Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Boyer? Councilman Collier?
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton?
Yes.
Councilman Weiner?
Yes.
Councilman Dennis?
Yes.
Councilman Tenon?
Yes.
Councilman Vins?
Yes.
Councilman Cook?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Street striping project. That's the next bids.
Actually, sir, it's the Sunshine Drive Guard Rail Project first.
But we can do them in whatever.
We can do whatever order they're both.
Matt's here to present on both.
Yeah, you are the mayor, so.
Okay.
First, we can do that.
Mine said.
He's American, do what he wants.
Yeah, it does say street striping.
Well, right. Two straight stripes.
That's striping it is.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, sorry for that technical difficulty. Before you tonight is the annual street striping bid in your packets. You can see each individual street that has contemplated, or what we had bid this year. Again, we, we go out for bids. America's parking and remarking has won many, many, many years in a, in a row. The other vendors know that, and I guess they are, I don't guess, I know they are disinclined to bid. They, they tell Shane that, that they, they don't want to bid. They know they can't beat them and it's not worth their time. So we get good service from that vendor and I don't have any hesitation in asking for your, your, your support in awarding that bid. So the, the, the one and only bid price is sixteen thousand, two seventy-seven twenty cents. And I've asked for someone to please make that motion.
I have a question, Matt.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
So it was in regard to like what Mr. Graham was saying, we, we do need some sidewalk visibility downtown. And I know it's too late to necessarily add it to, to this, but would there be a way that we could possibly have something done down there with the, with the sidewalks?
Well, as you.
Crosswalks?
As, as, as it so happens.
I'm sorry.
Councilman Boyer.
With the crosswalks.
Councilman Boyer mentioned that prior to bid about how the crosswalks were not as visible as they could be and asked for us to consider, please, putting a hash mark pattern in the crosswalks. Now downtown, you know, we do have the red crosswalks that are supposed to be, well, when they were installed, they were, they were bright red and you could see them very clearly. And so you had a visual minder that there was a crossing there. Now that they've had twenty years of tire tread on them, they really don't look very red anymore. They look pretty brown and they're hard to, it's hard to differentiate. So the, the new striping plan will crosshatch those throughout the community. And I don't see a reason why we couldn't with a change order, add one more at Josh's Park and add a, a mid-block crossing. Mid-block crossings are dangerous, but it would reduce the danger by having the, the paint there. So I don't, I don't see a problem with that. And I know it's not a huge, big deal.
Is North Mill on that?
Yes. The one, in fact, that was the call, the Councilman Boyer telephone call was about that one specifically. But we figured if we're gonna do it with one, we might as well do it, do it with all of them.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, I will entertain a, a motion to accept the bid from America's parking remarking for sixteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty cents.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton?
Yes.
Councilman Collier?
Yes.
Councilman Weiner?
Yes.
Councilman Dennis?
Yes.
Councilman Vins?
Yes.
Councilman Cook?
Yes.
Councilman Tenon?
Yep. Motion passes.
I will update the council with the change order price for doing the rest of the crosswalk as mentioned.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Sunshine Drive Guard Rail.
Alrighty. Uh, Mayor and Council, so for your consideration, you, you may recall, we talked about the Sunshine Drive Project and the need for a guard rail along that roadway when we approved the asphalt overlay project. So again, we've, we've went out to the market, asked local bidders to submit a bid. The one bid we got was an informal bid process. We realized very quickly that the project was a whole lot bigger than what we thought it was going to be. And that we needed to re-bid it using our formal bid policy. That is that an ad was put in the newspaper asking for interested parties to please submit their bids, and we got none. Everyone is just so busy. These guys are out working highway jobs and state jobs all over the country. And DNS fans, who we use a lot, just didn't reply. They are still interested in doing the job. It's just, they're so busy, you know, everybody's shorthanded. It, I, I don't know whether it just slipped, slipped the cracks or, or whatever, but they, they will still do the job. If you guys want it done, the quote we got is for sixty-five thousand dollars to do that guard rail. It is a terrible drop-off. I know that I've heard told that, you know, twenty, twenty-five years ago, there was a car that went down off that incline. So I'm sure that it, it would cure a dangerous situation over there. But again, it's, it's sixty-five thousand dollars and it was unbudgeted. You know, this is going to come out of our reserves of our city T-tax. And we have, you know, ample reserves, but it is an unbudgeted expense. If it's your pleasure to wait on this until October, we can put it back in the budget and we can try bidding it again. Give it a few months, but you all made a request to me, the mayor specifically, to get a, get a price for this and we could, we'd know what it costs. And now we know.
Couple of questions, Matt.
Sure.
I, I, I know, I know it's, it's deep, but this bid is from May seventeenth and it says good for fifteen days. If I'm reading this right and correct, those are the questions I had for you today. I forgot. So I'm not sure this bid's even valid.
Yeah, they, they will honor that, yes, sir.
And, and several more questions. If we're gonna do updates on Sunshine by the park, can't we just do it all as one package instead of breaking this up because we're gonna do crosswalk changes? Correct, Josh?
Better signage.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was giving better signage and thermoplastic.
Yeah.
Seems they had very good luck with thermoplastic stop bars in the past.
Yeah.
It's just a better material. It's not paint.
Yeah.
Last ten years over what paint, well, I mean, the complex parking lot was painted three years ago. It's back in the striping bid this year.
Sure. Because it's not bid and we have a traffic policy as well where we fill out stuff online and kind of initiate this thing and last question is.
Not be considered under the traffic calling policy.
I know guardrails is a controversial subject as well because I know the county isn't a big fan of them and that, that reading some research, they're not the most safest thing, especially the peel ones. And Chief, we haven't had any motor vehicle accidents over there, have we?
I would have to pull up a report, but I'm not aware of any since I've been here since December, but I'd have.
I think for sixty-five thousand, we'll just wait till October and bid it out and maybe we can piggyback on what Josh is trying to do and actually do the whole stretch and make it safe. Just my two cents.
Now you are talking about different vendors. Obviously DNS would be, would still be prop, probably the only one that would do the guard rail. The, the signage, of course, and the thermoplastic are going to come from two different sources as well, but i- i- it can certainly be considered in the entirety of a larger project or part of just our transportation work that we would do in the next fiscal year.
I was thinking of all the other T-tax and could we not?
It's, it's, if you want to pay for it now, if you want to pay for it later, that's all.
Yeah.
It's not going to get cheaper. I mean, I, I can't imagine the price is going to go down.
No, like the smart part is no vendors bid on it and we got a bid that's dated back from seventeen. That's what has me concerned.
I guess my question is, is that you think that's a reasonable price, Matt? I, I don't know what that kind of Mike may know. Is that a decent price for that kind of thing? Is there something better? I know the ones that peel, I've seen those.
The other way to look at it, Kevin, was the price per foot. I mean, it is almost nine hundred feet of guard rail.
Right, it's a lot.
I was thinking it's not a, a bad price per foot, thinking of number one, they're going to be working on that edge and it's, you know, eight-foot posts that they're putting in the ground to support it.
Right. It's a drop-off.
My concern is, Chief, when a car goes off and it hits something, it'll dissipate. Only hits that guard rail, there's no dissipation hardly at all. So that kinetic force is going to go back on the road. I'm not an engineer, but yeah, but I mean, a lot, a lot of your safety studies are not big in guard rail. That's why MoDOT has the cross cable going across fifty-five to actually dissipate the energy.
We could, we could bid it next time with the cross cable too. I mean, that might be another option. I, I, I didn't consider that. So if that's council.
DNF will put it in.
Yeah.
Mike, wouldn't you rather bounce back on the road than go off down the hill, flipping? Hey. You're, you're saving the people from going down the hill. I think it'd be better.
Get trees, dissipates, get metal.
But we're talking different speeds. What's the max? Well, their, their inability to follow the speed limit is not, we can't, we can't take care of all of those things. But I mean, the average person that hopefully is not racing on Sunshine is not going to, we're not talking highway, interstate fifty-five speeds. I agree.
You go back on the road. You go off the bank and they're not going back. So if they're not going fast and we're not consuming enough speed, the tree won't be a killer as like it, or it won't be back on again.
I think it depends on the, the slope that's on that side of the road that you're talking about. It's not a, necessarily a gentle going into a tree. It's.
But vegetation, trees, you've got dense, dense, it'll dissipate.
Mike? Just so Kevin can hear.
That you got growth, trees and vegetation, you will dissipate energy.
I think it makes sense to, to table it until the next year.
That metal won't dissipate. That's my only concern.
Next year's budget, so we can look at it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm for it. I just like to see more information and I don't know what kind of guard rail it is, to be honest.
I agree.
I'd like to have my two cents worth in here too on kinetic energy and so on, but if you're, if you're traveling straight and you're going to be traveling straight if you're going east on, on Sunshine there, you're not going to hit that guard rail at a anything less than a small angle, which is just going to direct you back into your lane. But if you go off that road and you catch a tire, you catch two tires, you're going down that embankment. And it is a severe a severe angle and, and somebody's going to get hurt most likely. So from my point of view, I would, I would say that if, if the if the bid is not going to get any cheaper, if this is a reasonable bid, and we've had, we've had people ask about this for eons. I mean, there's been people kind of be crying because they saw something and they thought, you know, so I mean, I've heard it and I think that since we finally have this, unless there's unless the circumstances deem it such that a like a, a barrier that would be like Councilman Cook was talking about on I-55. I, I think that we should proceed with, with what we have in front of us.
Just as a, a, a point of clarification, the spec from DNS is for a MoDOT MGS, which is Midwest Guard Rail System. That is a single W-beam rail with six-foot, three-inch post spacing on eight-foot posts with the bull nose on each end. That's the enclosed guard rail design that wraps around the, the end of the guard rail. So it is, it is a MoDOT spec that DNS did give us here. I don't know if that, that helps answer any questions or, or lay any concerns or, or fear.
I got two things. Do we, do we have to pay for this now or just when they do the work? So you're saying possible October? I mean, we don't pay for the bill until it comes, right?
That's right.
So I mean, it could, the way they're talking, it could be October or past October by the time they get to it.
I, I don't know. I, I didn't ask them for a timeline.
We know, yeah, we understand the shorthand of business, believe, and it, and how far off the road does that? Like, okay, let's say like this is the edge of your road. Are you right up against it? Or are you like a two-foot, three? I mean, how far back to something like that go for a guard rail?
I think the guard rail is going to be, it may even hang over the roadway a little bit. The, the roads. Because, because the way the slope falls away so fast.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I was just kind, I was kind of curious. I, I mean, because we're talking about dropping off, then bouncing back.
It'll be, it'll be right at the edge of the road.
Okay, so, so can your tires fit between the rail? In other words?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, that, that would be, and Brian, I think, I wish I remember Chris Hagan flew off there a while back. Yeah. Uh, I think he was towards the upper end, so I can't remember if he rolled over. You remember? Yeah. But anyhow, that, that's what I was worried about because that's a, that's a hell of a drop-off there. And so if you do go off there, you're going to probably roll over.
Kenny Waller's mom was the one who called me probably years or so about this and she was the one, there was a mother that was forced, semi-forced to almost go down that side and she was there, I don't know, they had stopped and her, and Mrs. Waller was there and anyway, she was.
Yeah.
She was very upset about it.
I mean, I don't know about you guys, but I, I've had, I've had people hit the cables in the center of the road and I don't know why that is safer because it just destroys everything and decapitates people and everything else. But I, I'm also like Mike, it's, it's a really controversial conversation as far as what's safe and what's not safe. But if you did, if you're going, you know, for a split second, if you're going up Sunshine and you, you know, whatever, you, you, you go off the road and your wheel goes off, it's all, versus you might bump into it and you could, I guess, swing back over, oversteer and hit somebody head on, but I don't know. I, I think it's it's safer to have a riff.
Well, my concern, my concern is that there's some pretty sharp drop-offs along Sunshine.
Yeah.
If you've driven by there and looked down, somebody could land on top of the house.
Yeah. Right.
It's, it's so straight down. So.
Right, they also have pools and everything else.
Yes.
Well, that's, this is what I think and I, I don't think we could go by what we've pulled out of there is what we may have to pull out of there with respect to Mike and he, you know, what he knows and the people that know different guard rails and cables. But I think proceeding forward, we'd be better than doing nothing. As long as I've been on the council, that's been a request. And if we have the surplus money in the T-tax, I don't see why we wouldn't try to get on the roster for getting it fixed. I mean, it's definitely a drop-off. We don't want to be negligent about not trying to fix it. As far as which one's better, I'd personally like to see a guard rail. Because I'm afraid a cable, if it was a, someone riding a bicycle up that hill or a motorcycle, they're very unforgiving. Like Jim said, or experience. So I don't know the different kind of guard rails, but I'm sure we could, I'd like to see us proceed forward. Matt could certainly advise us. Ask the questions about the different kinds of guard rail, but I, I do think it's something we need to fix. Because we, we know it needs to be fixed, so we need to move forward. That would be my thought and we, the money isn't a problem. You want to wait for this budget or that budget, that'd be up to Matt and, and the, the powers that be. But it's there. We know it needs to be fixed. We need to do something.
So let me rephrase, man, or Greg and I apologize. How do we know this is the best fix? Let, let me rephrase while the, the bad point I was trying to make. But why, why not?
Based on the recommendation from DNS who does this all across the Midwest. The MoDOT MGS guard rail is state spec. The, 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 I mean, they're going to spec one of two things, either six-foot or eight-foot posts. Here they, they opted for the eight because I think of the material you're going into. And obviously the spacing you're going to put between the posts. And that's just after a quick glance through the, the MoDOT policy guide. So in, in some ways, we are deferring to DNS and their expertise. We could certainly pony up a couple of hundred bucks more and ask for an engineer to determine whether or not the MGS guard rail is the best one to use. Or if there should be something else used in that instance. If that would make this a little more palatable for council or for Councilman Cook, that's, that's time, I mean, that's, that's easy. We can, we can ask any of the, a number of the engineering firms that, that do work for us to take a look at it and see if the, the MGS with the eight-foot post would be preferred there or not.
You guys think it's good? I'm just one of eight. I'll roll. So I'm just, I don't know how we arrived at, on a MoDOT spec list that this is great for a for a city road with a depth and safety concern on terrain, not highway speed. And that's.
Well, MoDOT spec is not just for highways. Well, it's used, we use it every time we do an LPA local road.
We also need MoDOT specs for, for like red brand, you know, default terrain measurements and default tire. So try to come up.
I can't, I, I see, and there you lose me. I, I can't speak to that as far as, you know.
Is there any other discussion?
I think given the terrain, given the questions we've had back and forth for the cost of an engineer or two to take a look at it, I think it makes sense. We already have a, a delay in getting anything to go anyway. Why not call in the experts to say, yep, this is the best there is? Or have you thought about something else? I mean, this isn't the, this isn't striping the roads or anything else. This is a permanent fixture. So I, I think just kind of due diligence on our side, we should do the homework.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to get the engineers to take a look at this and see what they recommend.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in?
No, it wasn't me. I didn't get a chance to say yes.
It was me. I never get to make one.
Okay, I got you. Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries.
On my notes.
Mr. Administrator, would you take care of that, please? Okay, moving right along. We have one ordinance on the agenda. We have bill number forty-seven twenty-nine on the agenda. Would the Kirk Clerk, please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-seven twenty-nine and ordinance repealing ordinance number forty-five hundred.
Sorry, sir, I jumped the gun.
All right. Bill forty-seven twenty-nine is now open for discussion. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Basically, bill forty-seven twenty-nine repealing. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Uh, basically, bill forty-seven twenty-nine repeals. Uh, ordinance forty-five hundred, which was passed two hundred and twenty-nine ordinances ago. Uh, back in twenty nineteen, this was the ordinance that authorized the bonds. Lease agreement deed, performance agreement, everything that was connected with the construction of the Hampton Inn by Festus Hospitality and the Goodwin Development. Um, that agreement was never fully executed by Festus Hospitality. Uh, COVID happened, uh, prices went through the roof and obviously in order for that project to move forward. Um, not necessarily the terms or conditions, but certainly the prices. That would be inserted into that agreement are gonna change pretty dramatically. It was the recommendation of Jason Terry at Gilmore Bell, who was our bond counsel on it, also Brian Malone, our city attorney. That in order to clean the slate, uh, if we're going to have discussions with Festus Hospitality. Uh, moving forward as far as any type of incentive to build the Hampton Inn, that we need to get this one off the books. So the recommendation here is to. Uh, repeal ordinance forty-five hundred. Happy to answer any questions.
Is there any discussion?
I have a question. So, so they had a ten-year agreement. We had a ten-year agreement with them. And then it was put off three years. So there's seven years left on the.
No. No. Uh, the ten-year clock didn't start ticking until they received a certificate. Of completion, basically from our building department where they would, uh, essentially issue their occupancy permit. That was the trigger. That started the clock ticking on those ten years and that never happened. So the ten years never started, but obviously construction never started. Uh, so the, uh, the, and before even that. Uh, they never executed the documents after it had been passed by council in twenty nineteen. Uh, given to them and their legal counsel for their execution, they actually never did sign the papers.
So had they signed the papers, that wouldn't have been sufficient to start the ten years.
Our concerns all along, um, when we were talking about this project was that because of the amount of time. Uh, again, dealing with a hypothetical here, but because of the amount of time and Brian, if I get something wrong here, please correct me, but. If they decided they wanted to break ground here in twenty twenty-three. Uh, but it was a, an agreement that was executed in twenty nineteen with the intent. Of beginning construction and completing things by the first of twenty twenty. Um, the, the timetables in question are certainly way off by four years. Uh, even though the clock hadn't started ticking yet.
It, it just seems to me like the fairness factor involved with a, um. And, and I know I'm incorrect in this, somewhat incorrect in the statement, but in a ten-year window. Of which three years has been taken off of it and then it stretched out another three years. So you're talking like thirteen years from the initial time. That someone, um, came in contact with us, that just seems, there just something seems wrong with that.
Well, a- again, to clarify what we're doing here, uh, we're basically taking that agreement from twenty nineteen and making it go away. Uh, sure, to, to, to clean the slate. So we're repealing ordinance forty-five hundred, which was the city saying. We agree to these terms and conditions. So if they're going to want anything. One year, two year, ten years, they're gonna have to come back to us and negotiate again. So this essentially from our perspective. Like it never happened.
Very good.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, is there any council member that would like this bill carried over to the next meeting? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read bill forty-seven twenty-nine for the second time and title only. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read bill forty-seven twenty-nine for the second time?
Bill number forty-seven twenty-nine and ordinance repealing ordinance number forty-five hundred. Councilman Tennen.
Yes.
Councilman Cook. Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Bill forty-seven twenty-nine has passed. Do we have any new business?
No, sir.
Do we have any old business?
No, sir.
Councilman Boyer. Yes, I always like to start with you. Cause you're close by.
Well, Mister Mayor, I had some, uh, complaints that came in about the loud explosive fireworks. Seemed like they're getting louder and stronger all the time. I don't know if there's anything that we could do about, uh. You know. The regular firecrackers is not too bad, but these loud explosions, that's something that the professionals probably need to be doing. But we caught, we caught quite a few complaints on that and you could feel your house vibrated. I'm sure Kevin Dennis can, uh, validate that too. Uh, but that's all I have, sir.
All right, sir. Thank you. Councilman Weiner.
My, my gram is gone, but, uh, thank him for coming in and bringing it to our attention, some of the problems that, uh. They're having down on Main Street and I think it would be nice to get those sidewalks updated down there, cause you do kind of, uh. Have a risk when you, when you try to walk across the street down there and good job for the council. Thank you, Councilman Cook for. Bringing it to our attention about, uh, different types of, uh, restraints that may or may not be. Uh, used. I had no idea that there was any controversy over a guard rail myself. So, uh, thanks for bringing that to our attention and that's all I have.
All right, sir. Thank you. Councilman Dennis.
Uh, I just want to make a couple of comments. I think the diversity amongst the council is what makes it strong. It's one of the best councils I've served on and everybody brings something to the table, so. It's always great that we can have a discussion and agree to disagree sometimes, but our goal is always what's best for the city, safety and moving forward. Uh. I, uh, want to say something about a guy in the room here, uh, over here, Corey. Uh, I just want to give him, uh. Uh, attaboys, he has dedicated himself to the city. In a way, when we have these festivals at the park. To the point where he has got it down to an art. I remember him doing it. We did it back when it, it wasn't as big. But the safety, the planning, the preparation that he does, uh, is outstanding and then. I just want to bring that to everybody's attention, how much this man takes upon himself and the pride that he shows in the city. Uh, it goes off without a hitch every year. I was always part of it. I got sent there a little bit this year and, and everybody does a great job, but he really goes above and beyond, so. I think bringing that to the attention of everyone, just how much he does and how personal he takes it to make people safe. And make sure that everything is done by the book. So, uh, just want to say it makes me proud. Uh, I was always proud to be part of it, but. I got to go both days this year and we enjoyed it and to watch how smooth it runs, uh. I know, uh, would make Larry proud. I know he's looking down and smiling at us, but. I just wanted to say, uh, thank you for what you've done. You dedicated yourself and it was a very good job. So that's all I have, sir.
All right, sir. Thank you. Councilman Cook.
I have nothing, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Collier.
Since Mike didn't have any, I guess I won't, I won't have anything either.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Just real quick, Matt, uh, ridge looks much better that they got the, the trees down. Um, the, the mammoth trunks. Do we have any, cause I have two now in that front yard. Is that a, is that a concern, not a concern? I know we've had a lot of trunks and stuff that are left from the storm that people aren't quite sure what to do with, but. In that particular, they took everything down, but they left the whole base of that tree in the.
I'm not sure what in the yard section says about that. That's a, that's a marked question. I think that was a building document is code.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can dig into it and see.
I was just, just curious if, you know, if there's anything that we need to do or are they just gonna wait for it to go back to, from whence it came? But it's bigger than my truck, so that's. Well, that's true. I should, I should put a bug in their ear. Yeah, well, we'll see if that can happen. That's it.
Alrighty, thank you. Councilman Vins.
Well, last night was great for the, our new fire truck being, you know. Showing off and good turnout. Thought it was a great turnout, a lot of people and. And a nice touch for Kevin Kramer and, uh, like. Other than that, that's about it, sir.
All right, thanks, sir. Councilman Tennen.
I just, uh, I'm, I'm really, uh, glad to hear about getting some engineer work done on the guard rail because. That, to me, that is a very dangerous area. I'm, I drive it every single day. And then I'd like to extend the same, uh, uh, basically everything Kevin said about Corey. Uh, the guys, uh, uh, this might sound bad, but I, I look at you as a fixture. You know, you're, you're always there, man. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. Well, I'd like to add my two cents to that. Along with, uh. Josh, you guys did a great job. You did a great job on the, on the firecracker festival. Uh. Turned out good. Barb, everything went well. The bands were good. We had great crowds. And, uh. Yeah, I did. And, uh, Councilman Cook sent me a picture of a. A kit plane. That had landed in our takeoff, took off and landed in our park. Uh, last Saturday, I believe it was. Now. The gentleman that had that. Went to the police department. They also went, talked to Josh. And made it appear that it was a radio controlled plane. And not a real plane. And it turned out it was a kit plane that he actually flew and took off and landed at the park when Councilman Cook. Uh. Texted me the picture. I went, I went over to the city park and talked to that gentleman. And he explained all the things that I just told you. And I'm gonna be quite honest and I hope nobody would be offended. But I pulled out my ID card and I said, I am the mayor of the city of Festus. And I am telling you to get this airplane out of my park. But, uh, you know, that's something that. I don't want to happen again, you know, uh, the guy. Uh, obviously didn't tell us the truth about the airplane that he had. And, uh, so we need to be conscious of those sorts of things. Uh, but. Things are going well. Let's keep it that way.
I know more about getting a plane certified by the FAA than I ever thought I would know. That's awesome.
Uh, anyway. Uh, that's all I have. So without further ado, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made. And seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.